Progress. Hello, everybody. Welcome. Thank you again to DLCD staff and especially the IT staff today for making this meeting happen and Esther and CEFEC staff. It's going to be a great meeting. It's a little different, as we all know, I want to make sure for the listening audience as well as for us that I explain the kind of the ground rules, which we have done before for these work sessions. Today's work session, we are not taking public testimony, although we encouraged folks to listen in. Today's, the purpose of today's meeting is to prepare commissioners for our meeting next week on Thursday, the 19th of May, which will be our second official public hearing on the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking. Today, we, staff, if you recall, staff came to us in March and we had our first public hearing. Toward the end of that hearing, after listening to public testimony, commissioners had some more questions and asked staff to go and refine some certain pieces or certain elements of the CEFAC rule. Staff has done that and your packets were sent electronically, I think Thursday or Friday of last week, and some of us also have our physical packets. The purpose of today is for staff to go over the rules, the emerging draft, as well as reflect on the areas of interest that the commission had. The purpose of the meeting is just to listen and ask clarifying questions so that we are better prepared for the actual hearing next week. So please try to frame your questions as questions as opposed to leading other commissioners to a position that you think we should be, that be, you can save those comments for next week. I think with that, I don't have to deliberate further. I can just ask the CEFEC team to introduce yourselves and start.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur. Bill Holmstrom, DLCD staff, one of the project co-managers, happy to be with you again today. Did you want to wait for other commissioners to come? We, it looks like we just have two right now?
Well, that's a great question. I, yeah, we were hoping, I don't think, Esther, do you know, I know Commissioner Jacobson may not be joining because I don't think she can be at the May 19th, 20th meeting. So I wasn't sure, I tried to connect with a couple of commissioners this morning and only had, was only able to leave voicemails. So I wasn't sure she would show up, but the other ones, I think, were going to, planning to be here.
If I may, Chair, Commissioner Lelek is trying to get into the room.
Yeah, great. And what about Commissioner Warren, since he's another, I mean, everyone's important, but he's one of the liaisons to this effort. So I don't know if we know if he is planning to attend. I thought people were, but I haven't heard otherwise. But thank you for the question, Bill. Maybe we can wait just a minute until we perhaps get Commissioner Lelek in the room.
Yes, but this is Esther. I believe there are other folks who are trying to join us via Zoom and I am having some background issues. So I'm still working on that. Thank you.
Well, why don't we wait just a minute? If Brenda, though, is here, we could introduce Brenda today.
She's also, she just also, sorry, she should be joining shortly. She, folks, when you're a panelist on Zoom, you get a specific email from Zoom, kind of from Esther, but Zoom generates it. So Brenda's going to go look for that now. And I might just call Commissioner Lelek and see what he's having trouble with. Former Director Ru is also trying to get in. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, Brenda, hello. Director Bateman.
Good afternoon, all. Sorry, I'm late.
No, you're not late. It's fine. I think people are having difficulty connecting. So and I won't put you on the spot. We're going to do an official welcome next week at the, at the commission conversation. But as long as you're here, welcome. It's nice to have you here.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Is Steve Shipsey on the line or not?
He's not with us in this room. I'll check on him. Thank you.
Well, I don't have a juggling act or jokes, so I can't occupy the time in that way. I do have jokes. I just always forget the punchlines, so it doesn't really work for, in the telling.
Okay, I welcome Commissioner Lelek. My apologies for the, some Zoom links. And then Commissioner Sandoval. I have sent a separate Zoom link to Commissioner Warren and Commissioner Boyer. As well as Commissioner Holova.
Great, thank you. So I think we, I think we should get started. We have a lot to cover and I'd like to make sure we have time for that. So I think we can get started. I think within a moment or two, they should be able to be linked in. So I'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur. Again, Bill Holmstrom, DLCT staff, one of the project co-managers, along with Kevin Young, who's here with me today and will also be speaking. Also on the line in terms of our staff working on this project in particular, Cody Meyer is here as well, and we should have Evan Mandell joining us as well. He apparently may be in the same boat as some of the other folks is having a difficulty getting on. So we'll be working on that as well. And we may have other staff join, but the majority of the talking today, a presentation will be for myself, Kevin and Evan. So with Cody here to answer any extra questions. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now if that's all right. And we'll get started. All right, so here's our agenda. We're mostly going to cover key pieces that the commission brought, asked us to talk about at your March meeting. So we'll talk first of all about some of the key changes that we've made since that March meeting. In particular, there's a couple areas specifically that the commission asked us to address that has to do around timing, bicycle network standards, affordable housing and anti-displacement, particularly in climate-friendly areas, large site block standards, equity analysis and the minimum residential densities came up as kind of an issue that we need to also, I think, discuss with the commission. And that's also again, particularly in climate-friendly areas. So those are the broad subject areas we expect to discuss with the commission at the work session today. And of course, happy to answer any questions in general from the commission as we move forward. So changes since March, let me just move my screen around here a little bit so I can see what I'm doing. All right. Thank you. All right, so Attachment B of your staff report that you received last week is a summary of all the rules that are in, that we're expecting to change as part of this rulemaking. That's a similar to format to what you've seen your last few meetings where we've given you copies of the draft rules and that summary is kind of a, you know, a big picture overview of what all those rules mean in kind of, you know, in plain language rather than in rule ease. In addition, this time around, we've added an extra column which says, which is a summary of the changes we've made in each of those rules since the March commission meeting. And so I do want to highlight that for you as someplace where we've taken that extra step to really highlight what are the things that we've changed since that March draft. And if you look at that, there's a number of rules where we've made minor clarifications and the number of rules where we've made substantive changes in response to feedback received, which has been, first of all, from you, from the commission at your last meeting in particular, given us feedback on a number of these issues, which we'll talk about here more during this work session, but we've done in response to that. We've also heard from our advisory committee, which we convened shortly after the last commission meeting in early April, we met with our advisor committee a 12th time and discussed some of the questions that the commission brought at your March meeting and discussed that with our advisory committee. We also had a number of discussions and feedback from technical viewers, from other state agencies, in particular ODOT, as well as folks who are going to be implementing these rules at local governments. They've of course been a frequent, our important stakeholder and frequent commenter on these issues. And we want to make sure that the rules that we adopt are going to be easily implementable by local governments. And then other stakeholders across the spectrum, of course, that we've heard from and that you received feedback from this entire process and have been members of our advisory committee, folks like that. So heard from all those people. Also, you know, reviewed the rules with an eye toward clarity and consistency. I want to highlight the work in particular of Ryan Markhart on our staff, is relatively new staff member in the transportation section who took some extra time. He's recent, most recently worked with a local government himself here in Oregon. So he, you know, had that eye, that planner's eye, looking at it, making sure that it, you know, things are, made sense, that they were consistent. I think in particular, we wanted to make sure that we knew that the right jurisdictions that were, you know, which rules applied to which jurisdictions was consistent throughout. That was something, particularly in the Portland metropolitan area, is a little bit different. So I want to make sure we were clear about that. Couple of other things like that, using kind of consistent terminology. Also on that line, same line, we did have another review, a second review by Steve Shipsey of the Department of Justice to look at the lawyer's eye and make sure, you know, all our eyes were dotted and teeth were crossed. And we had just a few pieces outstanding from that review, but mostly it was just kind of, again, clarity and consistency things. And Mr. Shipsey's with us today in case the commission has any additional questions on that. There's a review of written testimony or summary that the staff has put together. Evan Mandell on our staff put a lot of time and effort into that of summarizing what all we heard in those 45 exhibits that you received at your last meeting and summarizing that. So that's available as Attachment F in your, to your staff report. We expect to send out an updated version of that document with staff's responses and how we've been responsive to each of those points as part of your supplemental packet later this week. That's our expectation right now. So keep an eye out for that. So with that, I think we'll jump into the specifics, topic areas that we, you asked us to address unless you have any general questions.
I'm just going to stop you just for a minute, Bill, because I'm trying to get Anya Lee in, Vice Chair Holova. I think she is in now. Is that correct? Anya Lee, I see you not on your mic. It's muted. Okay, great. And then, and then also Commissioner Boyer texted me and I tried to give her some information and I don't see her, oh, is, I don't see her yet. So did the information I gave you by text help at all, Anya Lee, the ID and stuff or not?
I got, I got info from somebody else, so.
Okay, perfect. Great. So let's just wait. So Barbara is still trying everything she can on two computers.
MacArthur, if you could ask Commissioner Boyer to look for the link from Zoom, that is her panelist.
Yeah, I did do that. So, and I also sent her the ID and passcode as I was trying to also listen to Bill's intro. But so, but I think, can you give Commissioner Boyer a call directly and maybe give her that information?
You bet. Esther, do you have her phone number and you could do that? Thank you. Okay. I just don't have her phone. Thank you, Chair MacArthur.
Yes, appreciate that. And I think if with Commissioner Boyer joining us soon, we'll have a full complement, except I think Katie Jacobson. So, and I think she was not necessarily planning to be here. So why don't we turn it back to Bill? Apologize to everybody for the difficulty getting in. But I, basically, for those that just joined us, Bill went through kind of an intro of what staff will talk about, so you haven't missed anything. But I do think we need to go into substance now. So Bill or Cody or whomever is going to continue on, go forth.
Thank you, Chair MacArthur. Again, Bill Holmstrom. We talked about, start talking about the timing and kind of, there was a lot of, I think, questions and concerns in particular around that. So the commission does ask us to, to visit that. So we have made some changes here. You know, one thing I want to say is, you know, we've designed the rules to be used kind of on a constant basis and said into the future here. And, you know, it's not that they won't be changed in the future. They certainly will. We're, we're happy to revisit this in the future. We know there's a lot of changes that we're making and we're not going to get everything right. We think we're doing the right thing generally, but we're, you know, I think the agencies have to make a commitment that we'll revisit these rules as necessary in the future. But, you know, the rules are built to be used on, you know, as we go into the future and on continuing basis. But the, I think we need to think about the next few years a little bit differently because that's a time of transition from where we've been before, our successes that we've had before and things we need to change and moving into the new kind of way of doing things. So a lot of the timing pieces about is what do these next two years look like? Who has to do what and when do they have to do it? And kind of laying that out more clearly and making sure it's reasonable. So we have effective dates and deadlines set out in both divisions 12 and 44. Division 12 is the transportation plan rules. That's where most of this is, I'm going to talk about today's lives. Division 44 are the Metropolitan Greenhouse Gas Target Rules and those have, those deadlines in there have to do with scenario planning in particular, this, for this time around, it's going to be the Eugene Springfield and Salem Kaiser areas in particular that are affected by the dates that we're talking about there. So in general, this is what we've been trying to accomplish in terms of our timing requirements, balancing, you know, flexibility with the urgency that we know that we need to accomplish, that you've told us that we need to achieve in order to meet our goals, particularly around the climate. We know that science tells us that we need to act with urgency. So as quickly as we can reasonably to make these things actually happen. That has to be balanced with, you know, some flexibility and being able to be reasonable about these so that we can, you know, if we put unreasonable timeframes out, they're not going to happen. So we want things to happen. We want them to happen quickly. We need to figure out what's the best way of making those things happen quickly. So that's what we've been trying to do. We need to make sure that we're considering available resources, financial, staff capacity, consultant capacity, all sorts of resources out there that we need to make sure that we're managing. You know, there's lots of different local governments that are affected by these rules. And if all of them are trying to do the same thing at the same time, there may be some bottlenecks there. So we've been trying to think about that. That we're coordinating different requirements within these rules as well as other rules, particularly like the housing rules that, you know, the commission has adopted, making sure that we're not stacking up local governments that are affected by those in the next couple of years, too much in any one year. We've been cognizant of that. And then, you know, considering the feedback from those implementing agencies, those local governments that are going to be implementing these rules and their feedback about how to reasonably achieve these targets. So what we've done in this draft is provide in Division 12, two different versions of what's we call Rule 12. There's 12A and 12B that are in your draft rules that we've sent you. And they are two different versions of timings that the commission could choose from. I'll talk about that here in a few slides. The other kind of big thing we've done is we kind of restructured how local governments could ask the commission for alternative dates. So that's an optional process. We used to call that the work program. I think we found that, that calling it that and the requirements that went along with that, I think, set expectations for local governments a little bit higher than maybe what staff thought that we were going to get. And so we wanted to make sure that we were, you know, this is a, we don't want local governments to spend a lot of time putting this, you know, submission together. We want them to actually be working on the work. So we've tried to calibrate that. The, the alternative dates, like I said, is formally called the work program. We've tried to simplify the submittal requirements. I think we asked for five different things. Now we're asking for three different things. We just kind of tried to pare this back to be real clear. We're just looking for you to sit down, take some thought about what, what order does it make sense to do things in? And when does it make sense to do these things based on everything else that's going on, all the resources that are available? We've removed the requirement that they submitted regionally because that was seen as a barrier to being able to successfully do this work. And so that's no longer a requirement. They're allowed to, if they wish to. This continues to require local governments to tell us when they expect to update their transportation system plan as part of this work. We've connected it to the, the work program in Division 44, which Eugene Springfield area and the Salem Kaiser area are going to be required to do. We've joined those, try to connect those requirements together. So they can be submitted together as one thing to the department and the commission. So there's not separate kind of pieces there. And then it continued to be approved by the commission itself. I did see a hand up from the deputy director. Did you have something?
Hi, Bill. I just wonder if, and the commissioners are like me and want to kind of follow along. I find that at least the A and B section, we're on page 36, begin on page 36 of their packet. Is that helpful to kind of point out? I didn't know if the work program is found there as well.
Yes. Thank you for that. I apologize for not putting those page numbers up here. It is section three in either one of those rules, either 12A or 12B, either section three has to do with those requirements for those alternative dates.
Right. I see that now. And that includes the work plan.
That's what we're calling the work plan now is.
That's right. I'm slow to the, slow to game. Sorry. Go back on me out here. Thank you.
You're welcome. So we do have evaluation criteria for these work programs. We expect them to act with urgency. You know, people can't just put all their dates 10 years out and say, oh, that's when we'll get to it. That, that wouldn't necessarily meet, you know, the staff looking at that wouldn't necessarily meet the, think that, that the criteria. Even though we've removed the requirement for the alternative dates to be submitted regionally, we do require the actions that folks are taking to be coordinated regionally. So we expect people to actually talk with the other jurisdictions in their regions and coordinate to the extent possible the work that's happening in those places. In particular, it's going to be important with this next bullet, with those regions that are, have requirements under Division 44 and Eugene Springfield and Salem Kaiser areas, they're going to be doing additional work at a regional level. And so we want to make sure all the work that they're, have to do together or individually as jurisdictions is coordinated and thoughtful and how they sequence that work together. And every place needs to make sure that they're putting that work in a logical sequence. And there's going to be kind of different ways of doing that in different places. But there are some kind of base piece of this, of this work that we know aren't going to be part of the alternative dates that we know are going to happen early, having to do with climate-friendly areas. And then what is going to follow up on that? And so I think we're going to have those conversations with folks. And then, of course, we want to make sure folks are considering funding and resource availability. That'll be a big part of the conversations that we're having with local governments. And that, that's what that final bullet says is, you know, we're, we're not just saying, you know, throwing out this rule and saying, all right, you guys go and give us something and come back to us. Our expectation is that staff is that we're going to continue to have conversations with local governments about the state's ability to help fund this work. What makes sense, what other places are doing, you know, different communities are at different places in terms of their staff capacity, in terms of how old their TSP is. And there's lots of different pieces to this. Some, some places already may have done some of the work that might be necessary here. So we just want to make sure that we're respecting each of those places and where they are in their process. We know there's one jurisdiction that wants to start their TSP already. They're ready to go. They're, you know, aside from this process, they want to get going. And just as part of what their city council is telling them to do. So like, how are we going to work that into everything else that they need to do? Those are conversations that we're going to need to have with each of those local governments. And it's going to look different, different places. So this is a tool to give us flexibility and to work cooperatively with local governments. So real quick about the options, 12A and 12B. There's a table in page, I think, 12 or so of your staff report that, that talks about this in quite a bit of detail. So please review that if you're curious about what exactly each of these different sets of rules does. But in general, option A is the more urgent version is very similar in a lot of ways to what your March draft was. In some cases, we have added a little bit more time for local governments. I think there's only maybe one, one thing where we've made it shorter. And I can't remember that, what that is off the top of my head. Maybe Kevin, you remember, but everything, everything is pretty much the same or slightly more time because we've, we've heard from local governments that that's just necessary to make this work. So that's what we think is, you know, reasonably the most urgent kind of set of options moving forward. But we also heard from the commission that the commission would like options. So we've providing option B, which provides more time. Usually about six to 12 months for each of those options. And sometimes they're more like two years. It just depends on the type of thing it is. There's a whole range of different types of times and deadlines that are affected by this rule. So, you know, we try to be thoughtful about that and what made sense in a logical sense when you're looking at that one whole column or the other whole column. Transportation system plans, we've heard from the commission that you wanted options on that. We've heard obviously from, I think, advocates who are very keen to make sure that there is a deadline. And we haven't provided one so far. We said, you know, we expect transportation system plans to be updated over time. There's a lot of triggers along the way that, that nudge local jurisdictions to move in that direction in the rules. But we, I think we've been reluctant to put a specific timeline in there because of, I think, some of the, you know, resource constraints at the state level that we want to make sure that we're able to provide for TSP update for everyone that is going to need one by that time. And that was, you know, working with our partners, I think that was a tough thing to think about. We've come to an agreement on that in option A, that there would be a deadline for jurisdictions that are over 5,000 in population outside of the Portland metropolitan area would have a deadline in 2029. And that's what we were able to negotiate essentially with ODOT to figure out like, that's, that's what we were comfortable with as a state to, to put out there for, for a deadline if the commission wished to do that. If you don't wish to, that option B doesn't have that same deadline. It's the same kind of as what we had before where we expect TSPs to be updated. We expect if you send us alternate dates that you tell us when you think you're going to be able to do that, but we don't have a specific deadline in there. So any questions about the, the two options here?
I can't see everybody the way this is configured. So if somebody has a question, just go ahead and ask that. We don't have to be formal here.
Chair MacArthur, if I could just ask about Commissioner Boyer. Esther has shared that she was able to join by phone, but I see her in the attendees. I'm wondering if Commissioner Boyer should be brought over to panelists so that she can ask questions if she has them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know that she was, she tried on two different computers to get in. So thanks, thank you, Commissioner Boyer, for coming in by phone. But we'll try to get you in a place where you can actually ask questions. Thanks, Kirsten. I was just, back to the, the presentation, I think it's great. And I also noticed in the packet, in the staff report, you have that really nice matrix that talks about, that says on, you know, one axis, it says, or one, first column, here's what the draft was. It was presented to the commission in March and the outside world. And here is, well, how we've, here's the options that we've changed it to and revised it. So I found that extremely useful to look at for the timing elements for other things. I'm not sure if you have the ability to put that slide up here now. But I think it's really clear the way that presents the issue. So perhaps at the, at the hearing, we could maybe see a little bit more of that matrix in front of us. But that's, I guess, to be determined. Any questions, though, about the substance? Any clarification questions about timing options that is in your packet and will be discussed next week? Don't see any hands up. Again, I can't really see anybody, but I'm not sure why I can't configure this in a different way. My apologies. But again, I don't see anybody. And so continue on.
Thank you, Chair. One more slide on timing and that's just around Division 44, which also has some timelines on it. This hasn't changed. As far as I know, Cody can raise, wave his hands if something's different. But this is pretty much the same as what it was before in terms of the requirements. Yeah, Cody, go ahead.
Thanks, Bill. Cody Meyer, Land Use Transportation Planner with the department. Yeah, we did have some very minor tweaks to add a little bit more time to the work plan. to the work plan for Eugene Springfield and Salem Kaiser. And so we did put in six months at their request to have that. And then just flagging, these are the the default dates in here for the scenario plan and the corresponding transportation system plan amendments and comp plan amendments that would be necessary to implement the scenario plan. But it requires these two regions to submit a work program with what dates they think are doable. And then commission has the ultimate decision on whether those are acceptable or not.
Great. And so if we don't have any questions, I think we can continue on.
Thank you, Chairman MacArthur. So we're going to move on to bicycle network standards. And I just want to talk real quick about about some of the changes that we've made here. So the the rules in general for for our bicycle network planning, they are focused on and direct local governments to plan for a connected, safe, low-stress, direct bicycle network that is comfortable for all ages and abilities. And it does get into some more specifics about putting together a connected network and what that looks like and the types of facilities that we expect on that connected network. The commission asked us at the last meeting to include NACTO standards as part of our part of our rule. So we've had some conversations with the Department of Transportation on this. And, you know, they have some concerns about kind of the specifics of how this is worded. And so we're not stepping on necessarily, you know, we're doing planning level work and that we're not stepping on the toes of engineers on in the field who need to do their work and have flexibility to do their work. So we're trying to navigate those waters. The draft rule requires, and this is this is not really different. This is just, you know, restating that the requires that the local governments adopt standards for bicycle system planning and facilities. So we expect them to adopt some standards. When they're when they're looking at what those standards are, they those standards must result in the safe, comfortable or safe, low-stress and comfortable experience for people of all ages and abilities. One of the changes we made ahead of the March meeting, if you recall, is we did define specifically in the rule what all ages and abilities means in this context. And that's in line with the NACTO recommendations. The the last piece of the thing that we've changed here is we've we've been specific that local governments, when they're adopting these standards, may adopt they adopt local standards in part of their local plan. But they they base those on NACTO and ODOT publications. And we've we've put three specific publications in the rule that the local government may use. Use the term may. They don't have to use these. They don't have to use all of them. They can use one of them. Some, you know, our conversations with ODOT, some of these doesn't really make sense to use one of them without the other. Some of them have kind of different pieces of the puzzle to them. So we're trying to be inclusive here and let, you know, we're trying to get to a certain place where we can't necessarily be super prescriptive about how they get there because of the constraints that we're in. But we're setting out the the large picture goals that, you know, they must result in a safe, low-stress and comfortable experience for people of all ages and abilities. That's our expectation. That's the commission's expectation. We're trying to give them the guideposts to get there. You know, I'll say, you know, the Department of Transportation said would be more comfortable if we use the terminology, adopt guidelines. We pushed back on that said, you know, we need to adopt standards. So, you know, we this has been a this has been something we've worked on a lot, and I know you're you have heard from and are going to hear from advocates who say don't use that ODOT publication. But that wasn't going to be a an option in our conversations with ODOT. They thought it was very important to include that. And and I think that's just that's that's where we are. So that's that's all I have to say on bicycle network standards. Are there any questions on that?
Well, so it's just, this is Robin. So I was just wondering, so the reason for doing it this way is twofold. One, because ODOT had some concerns about the flexibility that engineers need when they're actually doing the design. And is that correct? Is that a correct statement?
Yeah, Chairman MacArthur, I don't know if I'm doing their position justice, but I think that's that's accurate. Yes.
You know, it might be nice to have ODOT directly at our commission meeting next week. So I can we can hear directly what their concerns are so that we can address those. It sounds like you've attempted to, Steph. I'm not implying you haven't. But I just, I still kind of wonder why we can't just go with the full on NACTO. But that's just my thought at this point. So then, so what you're offering is an is a way by saying, using the term may, you are offering a way to allow for that flexibility at the local level based on particular conditions that might be there in place already. And they're trying to modify a roadway or right of way, for example, and put in bicycle facilities. Is that what you're thinking is on this?
Yeah, I mean, we we expect them to adopt standards, right? We expect them to have a complete and connected network of excellent facilities that beat all these rules. Does that mean every single facility necessarily meets every one of those? Well, there's maybe another way of connect making that connection. Maybe not. Maybe there's a certain stretch where you can't meet the six feet. You have to have five and a half feet or so. You know, there's there's all kinds of things that are site specific. That I think that I think that's where that concern comes from. You know, there's there's lots of other things, storm drainage, you know, who knows what the other issues are that come up that, you know, make it maybe not necessarily be able to meet the letter of every recommendation at every single facility. We're trying to get to a place where we have an excellent network of connected network all over these communities. And that's that's where we're trying to get to.
Super. That's real. And it looks like you're you've tried to do that. So that's appreciated. Other commissioners, again, I can't see anyone's hands. So just go ahead and jump in and ask a clarifying question for Bill if you have any. Not hearing anyone. I think you can continue on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman MacArthur. At this point, I'm going to hand the slides over to my colleague, Kevin Young, who's going to be talking about affordable housing and anti-displacement within climate friendly areas. Kevin.
Thank you, Bill. Good afternoon, Chairman MacArthur, Vice Chair Holoba, Commissioners. I'm Kevin Young, Senior Urban Planner with the department. Can you move to the next slide, please, Bill? So at our first commission hearing back in end of March, one of the things the commission asked for was a revision to the rules to require local governments to adopt measures to promote affordable housing and address anti-displacement in climate-friendly areas. And so the revised set of rules that you have in the packet does that. The section itself is in rule oh, three, one, five of Division twelve. So the part of it within the transportation planning rules. And essentially, the rule requires a few things, a few things. First of all, identification of strategies concurrent with zoning. So the timing of that work is not not at the study phase, but actually when the local governments are deciding on and zoning their climate-friendly areas. And the reason we want that concurrent, of course, is so that we're proactive about negative impacts that might otherwise occur. Um, the rules do not set any required number of strategies. I think we expect a good faith effort as we do with all of the housing production strategy work. Frankly, that this is this is kind of a part of that of that effort. And the rules require the local governments to identify all ongoing and recently adopted strategies to to, number one, to promote affordable housing development. So they may already be doing a number of things to promote affordable housing. And that would also benefit climate-friendly areas. So it would be appropriate to bring bring those forward, but also new commitments to pursue strategies to optimize affordable housing development in these areas. And similarly, the rules would require the local government to identify ongoing and recently adopted strategies to prevent displacement. And one important component here is that you may recall from our anti-displacement and gentrification toolkit, there are different techniques that make sense at different points in a neighborhood's life, if you will. There are typologies. And so there are some measures that may make sense for a neighborhood that's experiencing active gentrification that might not make sense in an area that's maybe could conceivably be threatened by gentrification. And so this this rule asks local governments to specifically look at, you know, how their climate-friendly areas would kind of shake out in terms of these different neighborhood typologies. And of course, we're not expecting the potential for displacement in all areas. That may not be the case, or at least displacement of underserved populations. But where that is a possibility, the rules would require a concurrent adoption of effective strategies. And that's that's pretty much sums it up. I'll pause here. It looks like I have a question.
So when when you said neighborhood typologies, is that in reference to the typologies that were identified with the anti-displacement toolkit, like early gentrification, those typologies?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't some other typologies related to like building form or anything like that.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions on this component?
Yeah, Kevin, I'll just ask a quick, is this all we're going to talk about affordable housing and anti-displacement measures today? Or will we revisit this later in the work session? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. I will be speaking a little bit later on about minimum densities and kind of more globally, the issue of housing affordability, but not necessarily subsidized affordable housing. So depending on your comment or questions, feel free to ask an hour later.
No, that's okay. I can certainly wait. I just, I know this has been such an important piece of our rulemaking effort from the beginning. And obviously, you could speak about this for an hour and a half, I'm sure. And we've talked extensively about it. Obviously, we heard more about it last week from from a group of important organizations and voices. And I do hope that we just talk about how we might respond to that later. And and we've also just talked about how thirty percent of the housing could be accommodated, needs to be accommodated in the climate-friendly areas. But that local government still may plan for up to one hundred and thirty percent of their housing need unless I am recalling that incorrectly. So just it's just such a big topic and so important to this entire rulemaking effort.
You bet. Absolutely. And I appreciate the the comment, Commissioner Leelak. I don't mean to give it short shrift. Um, you know, an example that we might look at, for example, you know, the Housing Production Strategy list that we have, I think, has over one hundred and ten different strategies that local governments can use to promote affordable housing, to mitigate for displacement. You know, an example of a tool that works kind of universally to support affordable housing and it would not be anticipated to, you know, to create or would be anticipated to mitigate for displacement would be use of CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, or Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Funds to build affordable housing in climate-friendly areas. That's a tool that would get a green light across the spectrum regardless of the neighborhood typology. An example of a tool that might not work in all instances would be a tax increment financing, which is a tool that gets used a lot. And it does a lot of good things. But it's also important to recognize that at its root, tax increment financing is dependent on property tax values rising. And so for existing residents, what we wouldn't want to see would be pricing folks out of neighborhoods. And so, you know, that's an area where a local government would want to plan a little and think about how do we support folk, you know, circumstances for existing low-income residents so that we don't displace folks? Just to just to kind of flesh out what I'm talking about, it's all very abstract. All right. Are there other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this is Robin. So I appreciate Commissioner Leelak's question because this is this is a really critical part of the rulemaking effort. Because from the very beginning, even in our charge to staff for this work, we talked about equity, affordable housing, you know, housing supply, homeownership and that sort of thing. And that's why I believe that staff has worked so hard to connect the House Bill two thousand and one and two thousand and three pieces to this work. And it's kind of foundational. I mean, it's actually very exciting to me that those other rules are in place. And now that we have tools, and so I see, is it safe to say that this approach actually helps localize these decisions? Because a housing needs analysis is done at the local level. To me, if I'm a local planner or a housing specialist, I'm looking at the results of my housing needs analysis. And I'm looking at where I should put, you know, zoning and other kinds of strategies in place to accommodate that need. And some of that housing will be in a CFA and some of that housing will be in the non-CFA areas of a community. And these strategies are in place to really not only zone, but actually bring out and encourage development of the kinds of housing that a local area needs. Is that a correct statement?
Absolutely a correct statement. I think you've said it much better than I could say it. But yeah, it 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 folds in really well with the Housing Production Strategy Framework from that was provided by House Bill two thousand and three. So, you know, this is, this is, I think, as Bill said early on, you know, we're going to learn. We're going to learn from this. And most particularly in terms of how do we do things well in climate-friendly areas? And it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all because there are different cities. You know, there's a lot of different tools that they can use, and some will make sense in some communities and some will make sense in others. And so we're we're really trying to look at the goal, the important thing, but provide a lot of different paths to get to where we we want to get.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah. All right. I'll pause for any additional questions. Okay, I think we can move on to the next slide. So I'll touch on the next topic as well, large site block standards. Next slide, please. This is pretty straightforward. Again, at our first hearing at the end of March, commission provided direction that, you know, an issue was raised of, well, you know, if there were a large site that were designated as a climate-friendly area, say, a large site that had either not been developed or maybe for some reason, a large-scale redevelopment was warranted, would it make sense to apply a smaller block length standard in that circumstance? Because, as you recall, the standard that we had prior was sort of a compromise. Because what we were not wanting to do was to disincentivize redevelopment in existing established areas where a street dedication and street improvement would be a significant hurdle to redevelopment. That's why for the development site that's less than five and a half acres, we set block length at five hundred feet or less and then require a pedestrian through-block easement if that block length is greater than three hundred and fifty feet. However, for the large site, and that's defined here as more than five and a half acres, any any development site of that scale, the requirements would say the local government shall establish a block length of three hundred and fifty feet or less. And I'll note, we've revised our our reference to the exceptions allowed to Section three thirty of the rule, just for clarity. And there are a number of exceptions based on topography, existing built conditions, you know, freeways, that kind of thing. So that's basically how this rule would function. Are there any any questions about that? Okay. All right, I see none. So I will turn now, I think, turn things over to Evan.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah, we wanted to circle back on the equity analysis issue and exactly what we're requiring when. So next slide. So in looking at kind of the the equity analysis overarching thing, we realized that we're asking a lot. And people were feeling overwhelmed by it. So we wanted to split that into two pieces. And we wanted to do do good equity work in in all the decisions, but kind of more in depth during the major decisions. So we split it up into something called Engagement Focused Equity Analysis. And this is all in on pages forty eight and forty nine of Attachment D, if you want the actual rule language. But this is plain language version of it. So in, in Engagement Focused Equity Analysis, we're, we ask communities to really engage with those underserved populations we've identified and develop key outcomes for the decision to really gather all, both qualitative quantitative information, think about intersectionality. And then kind of do some independent, like, okay, let me analyze this, this proposed challenges and kind of see how this might impact our equity outcomes that we've identified. And, you know, say, okay, if we're, let's not advance inequity, let's advance equity. So adopt strategies to make sure that, that the decisions are moving that forward and reporting back to those populations who've generously engaged and shared their insights and wisdom. So that's kind of an engagement focused equity analysis. It would happen during minor transportation system plan updates, during the study of climate friendly areas, significant road expansions, which are Section 830, that's what we call them. And the really small communities when they're doing their transportation system plans, those with under 5,000 population. So that's kind of the level of equity analysis that the rules now have for those decisions. Next slide. So the second thing is this, this thing that was overwhelming to some people. And this would only apply under major transportation system plan updates. So this is, this is the thing that we joke, you know, we've joked about, oh, a doctoral thesis could be right, written about the assessing and documenting and acknowledging all the past decisions that have played into this. And we imagine again, so, so that, so all the, the major equity analysis requires all the things in the previous one because engaging the voices and hearing the real stories is a key part of the process of getting an equitable outcome. So, so everything on the previous slide happens during a major TSP update as well as the, the other four items on this slide. So it's, it's that really looking at where our land use and transportation, the housing policies and climate change and racism have impacted those populations, the underserved populations that we're trying to address equity issues with. So that's, that's items two and three on here. And it may be very community specific. It may be broader. Consultants may really specialize like, okay, we understand here, here are the things in, in US practices and Oregon practices that apply. And, you know, a lot of consultants do transportation system plans that have similar elements across communities. And this may have some of that as well. Hopefully there's some local data there. But until we do these, we're not going to see exactly how robust that is. So, and then item four is really identifying some geographic areas. And we changed this from high concentrations to significantly disproportionate concentrations of underserved populations. Because one of the comment letters from the city of Springfield rightly showed that inequity is sometimes an absence of certain populations. So it's, it's been exclusionary. So it's not just where we have high populations of, of underserved population or high concentrations of underserved populations, but very high or low kind of. So that's, that's item four is kind of doing some geographic mapping of that. And the last thing is I developing key performance measures. As you may be aware, in the key performance measures and Section 0905 of Division 12, a lot of those have equity components. It's like how well is transit serving underserved populations or this or that or the other thing? So that, that's the major equity analysis that we ask communities to do upon doing a major transportation system plan update, as you, we've talked about. Those can happen every five to 20 years. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get the larger, the larger cities doing more frequently than 20 years. But yeah, so that, that, that's how we tried to resolve that, that concern. Asking for something in depth, but only one time every few, every several years. Yeah, a couple of hands went up.
I think I have a question. Where, where, where is the part that comes kind of after this, after the developing of key performance measures? And then that's kind of measuring, obviously of actions. And then you have to see, does the actions meet the performance? So it's, I feel like it's missing the last two parts. It's like, what are you actually doing? And then how are you testing or validating that it's meeting the measures?
Cody, do you want to speak to performance measures or Bill and how that kind of, that loop is closed? Cause you're more, you've more had your.
And the reason I bring it up is that, you know, they, a lot of times we periodically get these, depending on what organization is doing it, right? They do the state of the, of the situation, depending on what population they're serving, and it's always dismal. And then the next time they do it, it's the same and usually worse.
Yep. It's a great question.
Yeah. And then we say, we should do better. And then five years later, we should do better. So what happens to the like, yeah.
Cody will solve this for you, I'm sure.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Hello. So to answer your question, the rules have requirements for a major report to be due by cities and counties every four or five years, depending on where they're at with their, their metropolitan planning work for the federal government. And as a part of that report, that really asks for the status of correctness of actions that have been taken over the planning period or the reporting period rather. And then the looking at the following up on any, you know, tracking on the key performance measures from equity analysis. So we have a number of transportation land use performance measures that are required. But the reporting also asks for a description on tracking on those as well. On the equity analysis performance measures that a city might adopt on their own or develop on their own.
So there's a potentially long, these major transportation TSP updates happen in a long timeframe, but there's reporting that happens on a more frequent basis. That includes these equity. How are they tracking according to the key performance measures in relation to the equity?
Yeah, the correct. So that would be rolled in into those reports that go on a, every four or five years. The cities and counties will be reporting to the agency on.
Any follow up, Vice Chair?
No, I mean, my next question was thinking, but I think I know the answer, which was, I guess each jurisdiction, it comes up with their own equity, key performance measures.
That's kind of a two-part answer to that. Well, Cody, you want to, you would more precisely answer that?
Well, I think to answer that question, it's really, yeah, when the equity rules in here are asking to consult folks on the ground and come up with the actions that, you know, were the outcomes that we as a city want to see happening and then to come up with the key performance measures and then to track those. And so those are, you know, we don't know right now because that's context and situational to doing the equity work.
Thank you.
And then just to follow up a jurisdiction, then once they establish that, they would then, they would have, so they have their own performance measures or standards and that, that might be different from a neighboring city or another city downstate. But the reason for that is because it was a local process that used input from citizens and interest groups in that particular area relative to those particular issues. Is that correct to say that way?
I think so. Yes, Jim, are there?
Thank you. I see Commissioner Leelak has his hand up.
Thank you. And this is probably a basic question. I should know the answer. But, and I really, I appreciate the clarity that was just provided with, with all of this piece. My question is, is, is the, is the, and I, and I get that any TSP update is a comprehensive plan amendment. Is the equity analysis and the performance measures, are they adopted as part of the comprehensive plan update, meaning that they're also appealable? Or could they be adopted simultaneously as part of the package, but they're not appealable? I just, I can expect local governments may want or may seek clarity on that. I'm just, I just don't know the answer. I probably should at this point in the process. Thanks.
That's a good question, Commissioner Leelak. Bill, I think this is in Section 105 that as part of a TSP. This is a component of it and I, I'm not an attorney, so I, I can't speak to the appealability. I don't know if Steve or Bill, you want to talk about that?
Is Steve on the line? If not, I think it'd be useful to have him at the next meeting to answer there. I don't know if he's still on the line or not.
Chair, Steve is here.
Oh, great, Steve.
And so Commissioner Leelak, would you repeat, which aspect is appealable?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Just the, the local governments have to perform the major equity analysis and then, and, and adopt performance measures. And they're doing that during or as a part of the TSP update. My, my question is, is just given that this is new territory, the, which, and I think it's very important territory, but is the, would the equity analysis, analysis and or the performance measures be appealable as, you know, as a standalone item? Somebody could say, you know, your equity analysis didn't go far enough or your performance measures aren't measuring what we think you should measure, you should be measuring these things. I was just curious if that's just part of, yeah, just a question. I'm just not sure.
No, it's, it's a good question. And I think it would have a little to do with how the local government went about adopting those. You know, if they adopted them or if they considered them inputs into that ultimate TSP option, which is what I would, I would think they would want to do. But they may, you know, a local government might choose to make some adoption that's kind of final so that they can lock a piece in place if it isn't challenged. You know, we've seen local governments kind of go about it both ways with some UGV work where they've tried to lock in a piece that feeds into a subsequent decision. So I, you know, I think, I think a local government would have some ability to control how they did that. And, but I would say suspected overall, we would see those coming as challenges to the final adoption of the TSP. I don't know if that got to it because that's a classic attorney maybe answer, depends answer. But I, I don't, you know, that's my best guess at this point.
Might you have more clarity by a week from Tuesday or is that going to be it? Just curious.
Cause I don't really know how the local government would approach it.
Got it. Okay. But there's, there are different paths that have different consequences for local jurisdictions. So it might be at some point useful to help them understand what those paths mean. And, and so they have an idea of how, how to respond to those things. So anyway, any follow up, Commissioner Leelak on that question?
No, thank you.
Any other, oh, Commissioner Sandoval?
Yeah. So at, at some point in the documents, we were talking about leading by race. And so here I see, I guess, one, one question kind of directly calling that out. But I don't see it in other ones. Can you, I guess, talk a little bit more about, about the reasoning behind that?
Sure, Commissioner Sandoval. There racism, so climate and racism are the two specific dimensions that we have here beyond the, the kind of the universe that's going on transportation, land use and housing. And so we didn't, in Section 3 here, we specifically called out, hey, let's look at racism in more, in more detail. So that, that is a place where we think we're leading with race more so than some other dimensions of discrimination and inequity. And that's kind of the, the balance that we wanted to have is, is let's look overall at all, how the decisions have harmed or are likely to harm underserved populations. Discrimination against poor people, people with disabilities, people experiencing homelessness, LGBTQIA, you know, for example, those populations. And then have another deeper look into, into race. So that's kind of the balance that we had. We thought both were important, but specifically wanted to call out racism. So that, that's, that was, that was the thinking. And, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandoval. Other commissioners have questions? Evan or Cody on this? I don't see any other hands up when I toggle through. So keep going.
All right. It looks like we've reached the end of our agenda. And I'll be talking about minimum residential densities, which is something we've, we've heard a lot about. I know that the commission has been hearing concerns. We heard some at our first hearing regarding whether climate friendly area requirements, including minimum residential densities would limit the variety of available housing types in climate friendly areas would increase housing costs, provide few ownership opportunities. And whether they generally would set the bar too high in terms of development that we, we want to see. And, and if we set the bar too high, are we actually disincentivizing development with minimum residential densities? So to kind of talk through this, I wanted to just start with, you know, the question, the fundamental question, why CFAs? Why, why are we requiring climate friendly areas? Well, I think, I think everyone here understands that land use and transportation are inextricably linked. There, there's a relationship between the two and, and frankly, the patterns of development we've seen in the last several decades with single use zoning have not provided as, as good access to alternative transportation options, alternatives to automobile trips in terms of meeting daily needs. We do know that walkable mixed use areas significantly reduce reliance on vehicle trips. So if we have a mixture of uses and we have jobs and housing and services in close proximity, it makes it easier to walk, to bike, to use transit. And housing and employment densities both support walking, biking and transit. I think it's also important to note that the climate friendly area requirements will affect a small portion of cities and will leave other areas available for development under existing zoning. So this is an area where we are actually, next slide, please. We're providing additional housing opportunities above and beyond where cities are planning, you know, low density, medium density, high density, employment. We're, we're saying, let's provide some opportunities for a mixture of, of housing types, a mixture of employment opportunities and so on. And so we're, yeah, I, I think as Commissioner Leelak mentioned earlier, yeah, it's 130% is really what we're talking about. So, so on top of the framework where cities have already established their residential land needs and they've zoned these areas, we're now saying additionally, let's, let's provide zoned capacity for additional housing and employment opportunities in these, in these climate friendly areas where it doesn't currently exist or it may not currently exist at the level for which we're planning here. Another important point is that climate friendly areas will impact residential land supply only to the extent that they're successful. Obviously, we hope they'll be successful. They need to be successful if we're going to meet our goals in terms of climate pollution reduction. But if it doesn't happen, cities will continue to plan for, to accommodate the residential land needs as they have previously. So, so we are basically setting the table for development to happen. We are looking at tools to incentivize that development and of course, to promote affordable housing development, minimize displacement that, that could occur in these areas. But, but essentially, at the end of the day, it's largely going to be a market response to these standards. We've made some changes to the rules over time. We started out with really what was kind of a one size fits all of, you know, hey, let's, let's aim for the sky. Let's, let's say you gotta allow building heights that are super tall and, you know, higher densities. We heard very clearly, it's not a one size fits all. And so the rules now that you see in front of you allow flexibility for local governments to designate less intensive climate friendly areas outside of their primary CFA area. So the rules require local governments to designate a primary climate friendly area that's at least 25 acres in size. But they are welcome to designate other climate friendly areas elsewhere at a lesser intensity. And that may be more compatible in some communities. That may be a better, frankly, a better way forward in terms of. That may be a better, frankly, a better way forward in terms of getting the the jobs, housing balance that we're wanting to see. The other point is that there's an alternative path. You know, there's been a lot of reaction to minimum densities and and the requirement for minimum densities, but I think it's important to come back to, there's another path that's available for local governments, which is the outcome oriented approach where a local government says, hey, we, we think we have existing zoning code or we're developing a zoning code that we think will accomplish what you're needing to achieve in climate friendly areas, and it would not require the local government to apply minimum residential densities. So there, there's another path available. Next slide, please. And then some important kind of getting down into the weeds a little bit in terms of how the rules are applied. I think it's important to note, too, that minimum densities are not applied to mixed use development. So any building that includes a mix of residential and office or residential and commercial or what have you, we would not, the local government would not be required to apply a minimum density standard at all. We have also, in addition to that, we have in this last draft included an allowance for a local government to require ground floor, commercial and office uses in climate friendly areas. This is a tool that some local governments use. We're not saying it should be adopted everywhere. It may not make sense everywhere. But I will say that making this available to a local government basically allows a local government who's following the prescriptive path to avoid applying minimum densities if they don't wish to. So essentially, you say, okay, we want ground floor, commercial and office. You put as many residential units above that as you want to, as long as we have a, there is a 2.0 FAR requirement, as long as the, the development meets that level of intensity, you're good to go. No minimum density is applied. Another new tweak that we made to the rules is to allow adaptive reuse of existing buildings. So, you know, one of the things I've heard from historic preservation advocates is that sometimes the most climate friendly approach is to not tear down the existing building, but to repurpose it. And so we recognize that applying minimum densities in that circumstance could actually incentivize demolition of buildings that might be productively repurposed. So the latest draft of rules allows for adaptive reuse of existing buildings. They may or may not be designated historic, doesn't matter. It's a provision that allows more flexibility. Lastly, I'll note that your staff report does kind of a deep dive in terms of the housing types that can be allowed in climate friendly areas. So we looked at density. We looked at the implications for small lot, single family and all middle housing types, certainly attached, single family, but also duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, cottage cluster. Based on the densities that we're looking at, all of those housing types would be possible in climate friendly areas. And I think that's an important point because Senate bill, I think it was Senate bill 458, which passed a year or two ago, allows for land divisions for middle housing types. And what that means, what that means is that we have homeownership opportunities for people, which is another, another criticism that we've heard of the rules. So anyway, that's just some perspective. I want to kind of reply to some of the, some of the comments that we've heard. We've really tried to create a lot of opportunities with these rules and a lot of flexibility. Are there any questions on these provisions?
Barbara Boyer has a question.
Thank you, Barbara. Go ahead, please. Thanks.
So you talked about the minimum density standard would not be required if they had mixed housing, commercial, residential. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Kevin, you're on mute.
I am muted. Yes, that is correct. I'm sorry, Commissioner Boyer.
Okay. So in, in, in knowing that, is there a minimum number of units or square footage with commercial space in this provision?
Right, so what we do have in the rules is a requirement for a minimum floor area ratio of 2.0. And effectively, what that means is that the development that occurs on the property needs to have the square footage that is twice equal to twice the land area, the site area. And that can be accomplished, you know, with a two, two story building that occupies the entire site, or it could be accomplished with, say, a four story building that occupies half of the site. It just gets at a level of intensity. It doesn't specify the mix of uses that would occur within that development.
Okay, and that was the 2.0 FAR. And that was a term I was not familiar with as of right now.
I apologize, yeah.
No, that's okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Good.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Leelak.
Thank you, Kevin, and I really appreciate your, your discussion. And it, and it sounds like, and maybe this isn't the form, maybe I shouldn't wait till the hearing, just ask the question, but it sounds like, and I don't have my package yet, so I'm just, I've been trying to just rip around online with the various links to see the, the rules and different configurations. It sounds like the rules respond to Sightline's comments at the public hearing about the infill and the redevelopment. You just mentioned that with historic preservation example. And so, so I'm assuming that the rule, that, that this approach responds to that scenario. That's kind of question one. Does that sound right? Where they were talking about, you have a building and I know they had a couple, Sightline had a couple of really good examples of what that might look like in terms of redevelopment, the tenant improvements, or those things. So it sounds like the rules have responded to Sightline's questions and issues. Oh, that's my first question. I've got a couple.
All right, thank you for that, that question, Commissioner Leelak. I will say, we have come partway. We've certainly been engaged with staff from Sightline. And yeah, this is an area where adaptive reuse, I think, really makes a lot of sense. And we, we, we see a way forward there. I will say that in our engagement with local governments that have administered minimum density requirements, you know, what, what I've learned and actually observed is that to allow, sometimes when you allow an incremental density, it really can inhibit redevelopment for a long period of time. For example, even something as small as an accessory dwelling unit, adding that to a site can really make the difference in terms of whether redevelopment pencils or not, or or makes financial sense or not. And for that reason, we've kind of fall, stopped short of, of going to some kind of incremental measure. Because again, we're, it's, it's trying to balance a lot of competing, competing things here.
Thank you. My second question is, our, I think it's Jeremy Rogers, our Realtors representative at the last RAC meeting, just talked about the scenarios in which a local government may be in a, in a position to deny a project because it doesn't meet the minimum density standards in an area, even if it's an increased density. And I think, do I understand that the alternative path approach may address the issue that was raised at that RAC meeting? Can you just kind of walk me through that, that scenario a little bit? That would be helpful.
Yes, yes, and thank you, Commissioner Leelak. Yeah, that's absolutely right. So again, that outcome oriented approach is not required to adopt a minimum density standards or height allowances as set in, in the prescriptive path. So in, in a, in a sense, the local government is allowed to choose their own adventure to, to, you know, hey, here's our development code. Here's how it's working. If it's something that they've had in place, that's great, because then they can point to development that's happened. And if it is achieving what we want to see, it's good to go. And there's no need to apply a minimum residential density in that instance.
Thank you. And if I could just have one, one last question, and that is that throughout a lot of meetings, you've used that really great picture about what a climate, climate friendly area looks like, the McMinnville downtown. And I, we've seen it behind the Springfield mayor when he's presented as well, couple stories, ground floor. So I think about that as being the classic mixed use building that we would see, Springfield, McMillville, et cetera. And so as I understand it, in a mixed use development, those would now clearly be allowed without meeting the minimum density standard, because they would have the ground floor, office, retail, service, whatever it may be, and then the upper floor residential standards. Do I, am I understanding that correctly?
You, you are, yes, Commissioner Leelak. Yes, absolutely. So, you know, in the case of that specific development, no minimum density would apply. And in fact, we've gone a little bit past that to say, if a local government wishes to require ground floor, retail, commercial, office, whatever, they're de facto requiring a mixed use building that will exempt them from minimum densities.
Thank you. All very helpful, Kevin. Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for Kevin? Don't see any hands up. I really appreciate, I always appreciate the whole staff. And in particular, on the housing piece, Kevin, you do a really nice job of explaining this. I think there, there still remains a lot of misinformation and perhaps out there, I believe, about what these rules do and don't do. And perhaps it comes from confusion, and I've had my own points of confusion. I, things get clarified the more you talk about these things. And so I'm just thinking ahead to the actual hearing next week. The idea of pictorals, you know, site plans, I mean, it's more than just words. Some of us are visual learners, some of us, you know, can read language and totally comprehend it. I like pictures. So I really want to get at some of these issues that have been raised recently, but throughout the process, and something that we're really concerned about is, what is the, the cumulative effect of House 2001, House 2003, our rule, how, our draft rule, how does that affect housing supply, affordability, homeownership? Those kind of the critical questions I've read from some of the materials we've received throughout the process, and so it's not new. But I want to really understand that, especially in terms of some of the things you're describing today, which is flexibility on the ground, because one area might have a different housing need than another. There's different displacement strategies or anti-displacement strategies, excuse me, to put in place. But there's also different ways to address density, livability and those kinds of things within the CFAs. So that's a tall order, I said a lot, but just a few more pictures, perhaps, diagrams, whatever you come up with. And, you know, it seems to me, and when we were doing the housing 2001 rulemaking, we had hit this sort of same place. We had a lot of really great words and we were kind of getting it. But then at the final meeting or the meeting before the final meeting, you had graphics and pictures and go, oh, well, that's what you mean. We get it now. So if you could help us along those lines, I, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. We'll do our best.
So we're at the end of sort of the formal presentation from staff. And so I was kind of jotting down what I just said, some things that we might want to see at the hearing to help us or the and or the audience understand what the draft rule says and does or would do on the ground. So perhaps this is a place where I could open it up to other commission members to request some things that you think might be useful from staff, you know, we can have.
Chairman McCarthy, do you see Commissioner Leelak's hand is up? I'm not sure if that is.
Thank you. Your, your head is cut off on my screen, so thank you. I do not see your hand up, but go ahead.
Oh, well, thank you. If we were just beginning the process of, of, of big picture discussing in the next 10 days, I was just going to jump in on that question. Given that we, there are a lot of changes in the revised rules, and I'll just say, staff, thank you clearly, you're, the, the package is continuing to evolve. My question is, do you see the, an opportunity for another listening session or Q and A session for local governments or for anybody from any side? I shouldn't just say local governments, but just from anybody, just because there may be questions that, gosh, so what does this mean? You know, this is new language that some or new approach? I don't know. I just, rather than having everybody ask all of those questions at the hearing on the 19th, is there an opportunity for another Q and A session just with interested parties? I'm just curious. And I know the schedule's compressed and I know you're all working long hours and intensely on this effort. I was just curious.
Thank you, Chair McCarthy, Commissioner Leelak. We hadn't scheduled one for between now and the next commission meeting. We, I think, had certainly considered to continue to hold them even after the rules were adopted, because we're going to be moving into implementation phase. But that's something staff can look into for sure.
Other Commissioner Leelak, any follow up or other commissioners? I don't see any hands up. Jim Rue, do you have anything you'd like to add or say at this point?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Deputy Director Green?
No, thanks. I think, you know, this is just such an important discussion, and I appreciate Commissioner Leelak asking on behalf of the cities, you know, for, for, for a Q and A session. And it, it looks like Bill said, you know, they could look for time on the schedule. It'd be open to all. So just be for all local governments. I think we've asked the RAC to put in their work for sure, but I think Commissioner Leelak was simply asking for all potentially regulated communities to have an opportunity to come ask questions about how things have changed, et cetera, now that the commission packet was posted last Thursday. So probably I would say either sometime later this week or early next week, but, but definitely the sooner the better. But need to also give people some time to read the rules as well. Yeah, thank you.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's the issues. And I think that's a good idea. I did find, as I said earlier, that the matrix is extremely helpful, because it takes the draft that was presented to us in March and then takes us through the changes. Really, I think it's a pretty nice primer to where we would go in the actual rulemaking or the draft rule to figure out what's going on. It's, so it helped me, perhaps would help others as well to reflect on that. I don't, as, staff, do you have questions for us? Not to deliberate, but do you have any other kind of things you want to relate to us? I know we can't have a discussion.
Commissioner Sandoval has a hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner Sandoval. Sorry, I didn't see you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm wondering if there could be a space to talk about some of the resources that will be available to cities, you know, when we, when they start to implement these rules?
That's a great question. There's a, a section in the staff report on that, but I think I agree that we should highlight that at the hearing next week. That's critically important. This is a big lift for local jurisdictions and all the partners that will be involved in those conversations. And we've been working really hard to make sure that we have resources and a timeline that works. Both those things have to match up. Resources have to be available for deadlines and for work that the local jurisdictions have done. So staff has done what they can on that, and we have some policy option, option packages we're going to pursue. But I think that that conversation should happen at our hearing next week. Thank you for raising that. I don't want to forget Director Bateman. I know you're new to this, but, and you're probably drinking from a fire hose as we speak, but if you have any thoughts or comments you'd like to make at this point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've obviously been watching this for a long time and just struck by how much work and energy and investment has gone into this. I'm very pleased with the process. And I think it was already pointed out that many of the questions that folks have been raising have been answered in our materials, which are extremely thorough. So I do want to give folks a chance to read through all of that and internalize it and, you know, maybe not, we'll hold too many hearings before they get a chance, or events before they get a chance to, to read through and really thoughtfully consider everything that's in there. I think many of the questions are answered.
Thank you, Director. So hearing or not hearing, not, not seeing any other hands and not hearing anyone offer anything in the way of a question or something else you'd like staff to reflect on, there'll be, it'll be a more robust conversation. I think you go into more detail on some of those topic areas and, and the rest of the staff report pieces. I think at some point, too, if you could just reflect at the, at the meeting next week, it's, it's written in the staff report, but a lot of work was done to, to correct like internal inconsistencies in the draft rules. A lot of work was done on that. And I think that hopefully has helped with folks to understand the full intent of the rule, of the draft rule, because with all those different kinds of little things that didn't quite match, that's really tough. But I know staff is working, has worked on that, is still working on that. So hopefully that goes a long way to help people understand what the rule says and does, draft rule says and does. I, there's no reason to belabor the meeting then if folks are done. I know staff is busy and they would like the time as well as commissioners and others. So thanks for tuning in today. Thanks to staff. I, I think it's a really good staff report and related material. So I appreciate the work that went into that short timeframe too. I think we can adjourn for today. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Bye. Thanks, staff.
Thank you.